Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, October 14th. Read the agenda. 7:00 PM Citizens Input. Topics not reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. 7:05 Selectmen's Update. 7:10 Board of Selectmen will be discussing and signing the Special Town Meeting Warrant and discussing warrant articles. 7:30 we'll have David Feldman provide us with a Town Hall Working Group update. And at 7:40, Bill Keegan will provide us with a Town Manager update. Jim, can you lead?
Sure.
Pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, there's no one here for Citizens Inputs, so I'll go straight to the Selectmen's Update, which will be very brief. Again, just a reminder, this Sunday is the Fireman's -- Firefighters Memorial Service at 11:00 AM at St. Mary's, followed by an awards presentation at 12:15 at McGinty Room. So, we just wanted to invite everyone to attend. Probably the only other item out there is we've got this update on our Special Town Meeting Warrant Article list, so just want to make sure everybody's got a copy of that for when we talk about that. Do you want to do some of the action items, Jenny?
Sure. The first, the first item in the action items is a block party at Villa Drive and Catta Road on Saturday, October 25th, beginning at 11:00 AM. Chief O'Leary and Chief Hefield have signed off on it. I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the application by Antonio Chalfi for a block party at Villa and Catta Roads on Saturday, October 25th, beginning at 11:00 AM.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay. The next item is a donation to the Office of the Animal Control Officer. $200 donation, and the donation goes to a fund used by the Animal Control Officer for the care and maintenance of animals under her care. So, I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the acceptance of a $200 donation to the fund used by the Animal Control Officer, and thank the donors who wish to remain anonymous.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? Thank you.
This is, the third is an application by Gary Carlson of Attleboro for reappointment as a constable. This, this application has been okayed by Chief O'Leary and the, who's done a Cory check. I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the application by Gary Carlson to be appointed Constable for the term ending October 14th, 2017.
I'll second the, the motion for approval.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
The last one, this is an application for a change of hours to conform with the recently passed legislation to allow liquor stores to open at 10:00 AM on Sundays as of October 25th, 2014. I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the application for change of hours for Express Minimat at 126 Main Street in Foxborough.
Under discussion. This isn't one of the establishments that's going to be in front of us, is it?
No.
It isn't?
No.
Okay. I didn't think so. I'll, I'll second the motion.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. That's it? Okay. All right. So, we're a little bit early for the next item. How about that last football game with the Patriots? Pretty good. Pretty good.
Except for the injuries that they've had.
Yeah.
But... You want to do your information?
Um, yeah.
Some interest information?
Three items in our information packet. Two are related to the creation of the temporary parking lots. One located at 119 Washington Street, and the other one located along Washington Street.
One's Lot A, one's Lot B.
Lot B, which is accessible via the Route 140 connector. And then, the third item is also, all these are from the Planning Board. The third item is the description for, the request for site plan review for the Route 140 connector.
So, the, the, all three of these are out of our jurisdiction? It's just for informational purposes?
Yes, just for information.
And it just includes that the conditions under which these were approved?
Right.
So, that, so the Board's aware of them. And it's, obviously, that it's public information now, so in case somebody wants them, that information is available.
So, being 7:10, the next item is signing of the Special Town Meeting Warrant Article. We have the full warrant in front of, in front of us. So, Bill, tonight, should we go through the packet and take actual votes on this, or can we wait till our next meeting to do that? When we have everybody here?
Your, your, your Board, right. The Board is not expected to do anything tonight with this, other than to sign the warrant, so we can actually get it to be posted. But the positions on each of the warrant articles is at next, the next meeting.
Okay.
Which is set for the 28th.
Okay.
I'll just, one note for, of information, that we, we have had it all reviewed by, by Town Council. The one thing that we, we're discovering, though, is that the, dealing with the signed bylaws, now that the, the new general code is in place, it changed all the numbers. So, and, so that was done subsequent, or following the, the action taken to post a warrant. So, there is a little bit of a technical, some technical changes on that, but it's not going to, there's no substantive changes, just technical changes in terms of the actual numbers, as to how they're fitting in. So, we're trying to figure out how to...
No con, no content change?
No, no. There's no content changes to the actual document itself. So, we're just trying to figure out what's the best way to handle that. It's interesting, because from my perspective, that if, if the, if the general code had changed after, this has all been approved by Town Meeting, we'd still, you'd have the same issue. So, I think you, you go forward and approve it regardless, and then, or deny it regardless, depending, it's up to Town to determine that. But ultimately, that's, you would do it and then, and deal with the technical changes afterwards. That's just, at least my, my, you know, off the, off the cuff review of that, but we'll have to wait to see what Town Council says and how we should handle that.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. So, can we be sure that a copy of this gets to the Advisory Committee for their meeting tomorrow night?
Yes. Well, we'll, we'll circulate that then tomorrow.
Okay. Great.
So, the biggest one on here is, is obviously the, the signed bylaws, thirty pages.
Right.
That's already, it's been in front of the Advisory Committee several times. Are they close to making a recommendation, or are they still, do they have, do they have the one that the Town Council, which is this one, kind of codified?
Um, this is the one, the, we just received these, the information from Town Council today. So, we, the one they, they, it's interesting, because they, the technical content of the bylaw itself has already been reviewed by Special Counsel. So, they do have that information, because that's already been done. It's the only, the only, but Town Council's only trying to make sure that there's nothing that, you know, is a, is a problem in terms of, you know, I suppose legislative, or there's any kind of a...
Like procedural...
Procedural issue. So, um, so there are two different types of reviews, but then, the, the, the content version has already been before the, the AdCon.
Right. Last week, I gave them a copy of the last version with the notes on it because of an illness. We couldn't get them to type, the updated typed one, but...
Correct.
They did receive the corrected one. And then, this will be the first time they're seeing the actual cleaned-up version of it with, without the red lines. They got last week the red line version and a couple of additional handwritten notes on it.
Okay. So, now, it's just to sign it, to move it forward?
Yes.
And then, the next meeting, we'll have opportunity to ask questions, or what have you, individual votes on it?
Right.
Are we expecting either Special Counsel or Town Council to be at the next meeting?
We can, if you want. I mean...
Just asking. I don't know if that's something that...
Well, I don't think we were planning on doing that, but if you, if the Board, that's what the Board would like to do, we can certainly do that.
Are there any particular articles you think it's necessary for, Jim?
No. I'm just asking if next week is, or next, is it next week or in two weeks?
It's, uh, twenty, twenty, I think it was the, the 28th, you were supposed to take positions together. So, so this is the opposite, fourth, I, that's my mistake. I thought it was, I kept thinking next week was the 21st, 28th, rather.
Yeah. I don't have any particulars. I just don't want to get to a vote and have somebody ask a question, then we can...
Well, we can certainly have, I think, folks from, from the, the Bylaw Review Committee should be here for that. And certainly, you know, myself and Dave will be here for the, the article concerning the Town Hall. The, Randy will be here for the issues concerning the, the money on the, for Article One. So, anything else?
Planning Board?
We can have Sharon, if we can get Sharon here. If not, otherwise, we'll get the Chairman here...
Okay.
For that, for that discussion. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I just, why, we, we were on this topic, I just will note that I had a conversation with Deb over the week, the past week, and we actually put together, actually, Deb put this together, a list of articles for consideration that should be, that at least we know of at this point, for the, for the next, uh, this will be actually, it should say the annual Town Meeting, not the, the special Town Meeting. That's, we just made that one correction. But articles that we know of coming up for the next Town Meeting in, in, in May. And so, if, if the Board has, and I think, as we talked about, I'd like to make sure that we continuously, continuously keep this in discussion, so that we can note there's any, any further articles that you know of, that we should be talking about. And if there are articles that we want to talk about, you know, for coming up, meetings coming up, we should probably get those in line now.
Okay.
Or at least in, in the future.
I think in relation to the signed bylaw, we should, we should close that with the digital billboard discussion on the...
So, digital, so a digital billboard discussion would be one?
Yep.
You know, we should move to make the, the signed bylaw hall sooner rather than later.
Okay.
Right. That was the plan also, to do that.
Right. All right. So, that's, that's a third one.
That, and Plan, Personal Wage bylaw. I know that's an item that has been on there.
We, we have an update for you on that tonight as well, how we're going to approach that.
And then, the host of Planning Board articles that gets deferred year after year after year.
Was that, which articles? The zoning...
Planning Board typically has a long list of articles.
Zoning articles.
I don't think, right now, they have any that, that are outstanding.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah. I'm not aware of any right now, but there may be. I just don't know.
We can check with them.
Yeah. And then, so, I mean, this is just to put, to keep this in front of you, so that, in case there are articles?
It's, it's, it's actually good to keep in our packet.
Right.
So, as, as we're, we're going through these meetings, if, if something comes up, we just make a note of it and...
So, we'll update it with these three additions on there. And then, we'll just, if there's, if there's anything else that you can think of at the next meeting, just feel free to bring it up, and we'll add it to the list. And then, we'll start scheduling some discussion points accordingly. Okay.
Thanks for doing that, Debbie.
All right. Okay. So, do you need a vote to sign the warrant, or is that what you need to do now? Need an action to sign the warrant?
I think at the last meeting, we made a vote to carry those nine forward. And if there's no changes, I think we already voted on it.
I think it's seven now.
Seven, sorry, whatever.
Yeah. Okay.
Do you want a motion? Why don't we just do the motion, so that...
Confirm it?
Yeah.
So, I move that we vote to approve the warrant for the Special Town Meeting on May 17th, on Monday, the 17th of November, 2014.
Can I have a second, please?
Second now.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Do you want to sign it now? We could sign.
I think we already have some signatures. Anybody to do it?
Yeah.
I think on last week's vote, so I think you have, you just need a few more, two more. I think John, missing John's signature.
No, John.
And yours, Jenny. So, I think we're good after that. Okay.
Thank you. Okay. So, we are about 15 minutes ahead of time. Should we take a recess?
It's entirely up to you. Anything else that the Board wants to talk about?
We can sign.
We can sign.
We have to sign these anyway.
Okay.
Want to sign them now?
All right.
Yep. So, entertain, entertain everybody.
Yeah. Not to, not to put her on the spot, but I just give Mary Beth an opportunity to talk about her first week, you know, on the job. So, you know, just kind of give everybody an update on what she's been working on, because she's been really busy. So...
It's been a great experience so far. We've engaged in two collective bargaining sessions, one with dispatchers, one with steel workers.
Can we pull you up closer to the mic?
Yep.
We've met with chiefs on different, on different issues, and have, you know, started discussing some of the, the low-hanging fruit compensation questions, personnel bylaw questions, sort of looking at policy a week to review. Last week, I transitioned workers' comp into, back into my realm, where it probably should belong. This week, we're looking at some of the other things, chatted with the police chief about injured on duty, meeting with the fire chief tomorrow. So, starting to look at some of the policies and where we are with things, with those. Randy's been a great resource, as has Bill, and I'm just planning to get around to each department head, each building, and start meeting with folks. It was as though people really were waiting, even though there's, nobody been, has been in this position before. It's a newly created position. I've, there's no shortage of, you know, phone calls and people stopping by, and I'm in one meeting, and I need to go pop out to meet somebody else. And it's been wonderful. The pace has been hectic, exciting. It's been great. It's, it's a wonderful community, very hard-working people who do a lot with very little. Very, very impressed.
Thanks.
Good group. We're actually looking towards reactivating the Personnel Wage and Wage Board. So, we're, we're looking on trying to schedule a meeting now with that group to get them engaged in, in the Personnel bylaw review, as well as the Paying Classification issues, because we have ideas, but we want to get their reaction to those ideas. So, we, so I think it's just, it's, I, I see them as, as a resource that we, well, I know that their role is technically changed with respect to how the charter is written, and, and I think we're all, we're all respectful of that. But the, the issue is, you know, getting someone to react to some of our ideas, so we don't really go off, off the rails or anything that's, that people won't, won't support. And so, we want to reactivate that group and get, and get some discussion going sooner rather than later. In fact, we, we're, we're trying to, we're trying to set a meeting.
I think we have a tentative one for next week.
Okay. So, then, I'll get that discussion going again, which will be good.
About how many employees now fall into that category?
Not many, unfortunately.
Less than 20, I would say.
Less than 20?
Yeah. It's less than 20. That's a good number to put on there.
Yeah.
And then, but it's just, it's still good to have that discussion, because we are actively meeting with the, with the steelworkers, and, and we'll, you know, we'll see how that plays out. I mean, we just, we don't know where that's going to go at this point. But, you know, how many meetings, how many more meetings we'll need for that, to get that, get that first contract in place. So, we'll see, see where it goes.
When you mention steelworkers, people think it's a construction project. It's kind of an anomaly.
Exactly.
Was represented by the steelworkers, which you don't see happen in too many towns.
It's very unusual, yeah.
I will, I will tell you, though, I actually had experience with them, daily in Seccong. Why, the, it was actually a Town Hall group as well, that they, that they, that they activated. And they, and we had a first contract with them, and Leo was, was the, was the negotiator. So, it's like deja vu for me all over again. So, um, so I am familiar with them, they're familiar with me, so that's, that's a good thing, I guess, so. But between, but I, I will tell you, it's been a good discussion so far. We've, you know, it's been very, you know, it's been a good back-and-forth discussion. We had a really good meeting with the dispatchers the other day. I thought it was really, really good discussion, what, what they want to do, what they, how they like to approach things. So, I thought it was very positive. We've got another meeting with the firefighters set up for next week.
Next week.
On the 21st, I believe it is. So, you know, we're just trying to get everybody going in the, moving in the right direction, which will be helpful. I think we're off schedule with, with police officers at this point, so we don't need to worry about them so much right now. But I'm sure after the first, the other one, we'll have some initial discussions as well.
So, Mary Beth, when you came in, it was kind of a transition. We had a Human Resources Director, and through Bill, kind of transitioned into Assistant Town Manager. And there's probably distinct responsibilities on each, but...
Yes.
You're kind of a jack-of-all-trades across on, on some of this stuff.
Right.
Is it possible to define a percentage of what you're doing with HRs for, you know, Human Resources Issues and Opportunities versus Assistant Town Manager for other, 50/50 split or something like that?
Having only been about a week, I would say it's probably 50/50 right now. Because there was no HR Director in place, some of the stuff has become decentralized. So, things that would normally sit in an HR function are sitting in the Treasurer's office, or the Accounting Office, or in some cases, Selectmen's Office, or even DPW. So, sort of going around, looking at those HR-type things and seeing how they're being, you know, how it's being done right now, what things I can absorb. So, I do think it'll probably continue to be about a 50/50 split. A lot of it is being available and being present for people, and I think that's been welcomed just in the last week, people needing to be available. But working with Bill on his stuff is been, that's been really exciting, too. But I can let you know, let's say, a few more weeks under my belt.
Yeah. It's a different route that we're going.
I'm curious, too. You know? It's, it's unscripted at this point.
Yeah. That's probably the best way to describe it. It's unscripted, we're going, we're going, we're going to make it all work. But I think what's, what's important to, for me, is that I've tried to pull her into just about everything I were working on, including even the working group, you know, discussions, because, you know, if I'm not available, then she can be, you know, available. And so, we're trying to, you know, but I'm also being respectful of the fact that she's got some really intense issues to deal with, with, with HR stuff, because it's been sort of on a back burner for a little while. And so, it's, so she's got some catch-up to do in that area.
Mm-hmm.
But fortunately, you know, I also have an HR background, so we can, you know, we sort of bounce ideas off each other pretty well. So, it's, it's a good, it's a good, it's a good match in that respect, so. But I am, we are going to meet on some stadium issues this week and work with, work with Mr. Kraft, and we're going to actually meet Mr. Kraft this week, Mr. and, Mr. Kraft and Jonathan. We're going to meet this week, so we're going to have a, you know, our first meeting with them this week. So, face-to-face meeting, where we met informally on many, even several occasions, but not in a more formal setting. So, which will be good. Good to bounce ideas off each other about, and then get, let them know, get them the opportunity to meet, you know, Mary Beth, and so that we're, we both have the opportunity to discuss things with them. So, it'll be good. Be good. Going in that direction as well. So...
And again, you're going to be a speaker at, on October 25th, at the Selectmen's Conference?
Yes. I've been asked to speak at the Mass Selectmen's Association meeting on, on October 25th at the, at the Tri-County School in Franklin, talking about charter issues, actually. One of the things, committees I serve on in the state is, is the, is the former government committee, which I've been on it since, for the past 10 years. And so, they've asked me to speak with, alongside Marilyn Katraeus, who was, works for DHCD, about the housing, Department of Housing and Community Development. And Marilyn and I have known each other for at least all 31 years that I've been in the business. So, she's, she's a good friend and a, and a really knowledgeable person when it comes to dealing with forms, different forms of government throughout the state. So, talking about different charter issues and different changes that, that are new, unique to Massachusetts. So, so we opted to meet with other selectmen from across the Commonwealth, talk about how, you know, how it works here in Foxborough, but it's also, I can share the experience I worked in Dedham, up in, in Seccong, and actually, my experiences in Florida, where I worked in the city government. So, it's, it'll be interesting to talk about all those different, different things.
Yeah. I attended that last year, and it was a really, really interesting, we got...
Yeah. You went on a lot of different good stuff.
Right. And the big issue that we were thinking of is, John Gray also went to it. And we were talking to people about, how do you, how did you find your Town Manager? And that was, we were able to talk to a lot of selectmen from different communities, and it was really good. So, I encourage, I don't know who else is going this year, but I encourage you to go. It's good.
One of the topics we're going to talk about this year is selecting a Town Manager, so you don't have to worry about that.
Yeah.
This is talking right now. But, or actually, a little bit, a little bit late in that process, but, but they, but this is a, a good discussion point, too. But even though, your, your charter was actually, is relatively new, you know, in terms of change, so you're not looking at any significant changes at this point, but, but it's still a good, good be able to share those experiences with different, different folks from around the state. Because, you know, it's, it's, that's a good meeting for selectmen to go to anyways, because you, it's interesting to talk about different issues, but it's also nice to know that many of the issues that you talk about are not unique to just Foxborough.
Yeah.
They're, they're similar virtually every place you go. They have different names, different faces attached to them, but they're pretty much the same, you know, everywhere you go. So, it's good to know that you can share ideas with each other, and so, and learn from other people's experiences. So, I think it's a good thing for, for Board members to have, if you can make it. It's a Saturday, so it's a commitment, so, but I understand that, too. But, but it's, it's also a good, good opportunity. Okay.
All right.
Good work.
So, it being 7:30, going to do an update from the Town Hall Working Group, Dave Feldman. Bill, do you want to come to the table?
Yeah. Well, yeah, come on up, Bill. We'll, we'll get to that discussion in a minute, but just update the Board where we're at, in terms of the process.
First off, I just want to pass along our condolences to Jack Schler on the passing of his wife, Antonette. Jack is a member of the Town Hall Working Group, and has, has offered plenty of insight from his architectural background on, on a lot of the issues that we covered. Our condolences go out to Jack and his family.
Absolutely. Thanks for, thanks for mentioning that.
Yep. The Town Hall Working Group, I think we've, we've pretty much wrapped up a lot of our meetings at this point. We're just on a wait-and-see right now. We anticipate the shortlist of architects by the end of this week, the 24th. We have the interviews scheduled for the architects, and hopefully, we should be ready for the Selectmen's vote on the 28th. And I know the OPM is, is tracking right behind that. And we've had a lot of good, good attention paid from, I think, 13 architectural outfits, picked-up papers, and 19 OPMs. So, we should be able to, to really look at some good competitive bidding in this process. We hope to have, on the 30th, a public presentation with the entire Town Hall Working Group. I think we're going to, we're going to put to ad in the reporter over the next couple of Thursdays prior to that, to advertise, and we'll get it up on the website, and, and prior to that, to advertise, and we'll get it up on the website and, and really try and get the public involved and, um, so they can kind of hear it from the horse's mouth versus what they were reading in the paper and, and be able to ask, uh, you know, detailed questions and get detailed answers. So, uh, actually looking forward to that. I think that's gonna be a good, a good venue, uh, try and, try and put these questions to bed, uh, once and for all. And I know, uh, Bill, you've been hitting the, uh, the cable TV airwaves and have some more scheduled, so. Um, the, we hope to have everything presented for AdCom for, for their vote, uh, by November fifth.
We just, a couple of more updates on it, and, and, uh, Bill and I met today with the, uh, with the subgroup to evaluate the, um, the different proposals that were submitted. We actually had six proposals that were submitted.
For the architects.
For the architects. Um, we had, we had, we had over forty originally take papers out, and that, and that was reduced down to about thirteen that showed interest. And then we had, um, actual six proposals. Uh, of the six that we've now, that grouped down to four that we want to interview. And we, we're shooting for either-
Actually gonna be the twentieth.
It's gonna be the twentieth, okay. We're actually gonna shoot for the twentieth for the interviews. So, uh, which will be next Thursday, right?
No, next Monday.
Oh, next Monday, I'm sorry, next Monday. And so we're gonna shoot to, to get all those interviews done in one day. We, uh, you know, we had some good, we had some good proposals, so, uh, we, you know, we're, we're actually kind of anxious to, to get those interviews underway. And then as far as the, uh, the hearing, the, I, I actually have gone on TV. I actually had Bill and I and, um, and Ken Elevitz were on, we taped the show last Friday, uh, to talk about the project and to, and to present information about, you know, all the things that we've discussed in the process up to now, uh, to provide information for the public. About the fact that we are recommending a new building and the reasons why, you know, we're doing that. So it's, it's been all informational, just to try and put that information out to folks that they understand why, why we've, we've done, we've done up to this point. There is, uh, another, uh, discussion, another telephone, uh, television taping that's gonna be done on Monday, um, uh, with, uh, with Bob, uh-
Bob Hickey.
Bob, uh, Bob Hickey, Bob Hickey Show, uh, Bob Hickey Show, and, uh, thank you. And, um, and we're gonna do that on, uh, early, we're gonna tape early, and, and Mary Beth will be on that show as well. So, but we're gonna talk about other things other than just this project. We're gonna talk about other things as well, but, um, that's another, another opportunity to be on TV about this as well. The, I think the public hearing piece is actually a, a good thing to do, and I, and I, I talked about, we talked about this internally at the, at the meeting, and this, so that we, we can really air out all the concerns. It's sort of an understanding of what the concerns that people have about the project, because, uh, there's been a lot of discussion, but I think, um, but it's been in sort of limited form. So I think this will be a good opportunity to bring it all out there and let people, you know, say what they have to say about it. And sort of clear up some of the, you know, misconceptions we have, we keep hearing about it as well. We know that there's a strong opinion, you know, towards, from one individual that really wants it to be renovation. And what, you know, this is an opportunity to sort of present the other side of that, that, that issue in a much more open, uh, fashion than just a newspaper clipping. So I think this is, uh, a good discussion, a good, a good opportunity for that at this point. And then just along the update of where Town Hall is, we, we've been doing further analysis of the building itself, because we know that irrespective of what happens at Town Hall and this project, and whether it happens at this, this time or sometime in the future, it's still gonna be a two to three, two, two and a half year project before approval and then construction phase. But there are some interim things that we need to do with the building, because the, the building is sustaining some significant issues that need to be addressed now. We can't wait on. That being in the roof and, and the gutter system, which is, uh, actually in disrepair, it needs to be addressed now, because as I said, irrespective of what happens, it's gonna be at least two and a half years before we actually can, can get, get into a new building, if, if we stay on that schedule. So, um, so we, we are moving ahead to try and do some repairs to the roof and replace the roof as it is right now, and replace the gutter system. And that's why I want to have Bill come in tonight, just to talk about that. So, so it'll be a surprise as they see us doing repairs to the building, because we still need to live in that building for, for a couple, at least a couple of years.
Yeah, and the, uh, unfortunately, the roof already has two layers of roofing on it, so it's, you know, we kind of hoped they had one, cause we could just go over it, and it would've been obviously a little bit cheaper. The, uh, the real issue here is that the, um, as well as that roof was designed, most of the, uh, issues are coming from the valleys where the copper, um, basically is, is faced on each side by the shingles. The chimney, uh, which has, um, you know, basically, it's got two issues. It doesn't have the proper build in the back of it, so the water's hitting the chimney, coming down and, and creating issues, um, around it. There's about a half a dozen, uh, other, um, areas, whether they're vents, um, you know, uh, for pipe-type things for, for plumbing, or whether they're just air vents, um, all that are, you know, now at this point deteriorate to the point where they're leaking. We looked at potentially trying to do a patch and save type of thing. Uh, again, when you're dealing with two layers of roofing, um, what you'll end up probably doing is disturbing a third area, um, and now you've created another problem for yourself, because you have to come back and try to fix and find that area. So what we did was we went out and brought in a number of contractors to view the roof with us, um, and gave them the basic concept of what we wanted to do. We received back three proposals on doing it, and, uh, they ranged from, um, including gutters, roofing gutters, from about thirty-one thousand up to about forty-four thousand dollars to do it. The, the way I'm kind of looking at it at this point, and I, and I agree with what Bill said, in our best case, if the town supports what we're talking about, we're gonna be there for three years. If you look at it from a, a cost maintenance point of view, you're talking about nine thousand to ten thousand dollars a year, um, to survive this, you know, proposition. The fact that the water at every rainstorm comes through now, um, is, is really problematic by itself. The fact that when you get to the wintertime, you've got a bigger issue, because if it starts to back up, your leaks and your problems are gonna be much greater. And so what, what, you know, we're proposing is basically to replace the roof at this point in time, be able to survive the next three years. While we're saying that, you know, we obviously don't want to move out, that's our, our primary thing, is try to build and leave the building there. We still have to kind of protect the assets that are there, the people that are there, and, and all the records that are there. Probably should've been done a few years ago. I'll be the first one to admit that that would've been a good thing, but the funding was put in last year's budget to allow us to do it this year. So we do have the thirty thousand dollars sitting in a, uh, maintenance budget line under the Town Hall. And I, and, you know, my recommendation is that we just do it now, get it, uh, get it done before the winter comes in, um, and then we'll be comfortable for the next three years, knowing that at least we've done everything we can, uh, to protect, uh, as I said, the assets of the building and the, and the staff that we have in there. It really is pretty discouraging when you go in there on any rainstorm with the amount of water that's coming through that roof. Uh, and as I said, if you tried to do a patch, I guarantee you, you're not gonna find all the areas, and, uh, so you're gonna keep going at it. And even a good patch, for the amount of area we'd have to do, which is every single valley and every single, uh, exclusion through the roof, you're probably still talking about half that number. So, um, half versus a whole, and being able to go three years without worrying about it. I know a lot of people would say, once you put the roof on, boy, you've just done, you know, all this major work. Again, I, I feel very strongly that that's just a maintenance fix for a period of time. It buys us as cheap rent, if you wanna look at it, you know, three years worth of more time within the building. So my, my suggestion, um, and I think Bill's along with me, is that we just go ahead and get this done. We do have a good bid on it, uh, it's successful, it's under the thirty-five thousand, and we can move forward.
As I, as I, um, Bill approached me today and talked about, I said, let's, let's, let's put it out there. I mean, let's talk about it, let's, let the public know, and we're not trying to hide this. We, we want everybody to know that this is the kind of work that has to be done to get, to keep the buil, the building functional. Um, I, I walk in the building and I see the baskets, you know, over the, over the cabinets, so the file cabinets, and, and we just can't continue to do that. I mean, it's just, it's, eventually it's gonna be, as you correctly pointed out, the wintertime, that, that, that stuff freezes and it gets, it's even worse. So this is just a, a maintenance step that would have to be done. But I didn't want anybody to think that we were trying to do something that was underhanded or behind the scenes. This is strictly out there for, for informational purposes, so everybody know that.
Appreciate you bringing it forward. This is a line item in the maintenance section of the budget, so-
This is already budgeted, this money is available now.
Do you, are you looking for consensus from the board to support this, or just-
It was more informational, cause I think, uh, it, it, cause it's a decision that I would normally make, but I, but I didn't want anybody to think that we were hiding. And I just, I wanna put it out there for everybody to be aware of.
Okay, appreciate that, thank you.
Just, just, cause you can imagine, people are gonna say, how can you put that money in when you're gonna tear down the building maybe in a couple of years? The same topic came up probably, probably three years ago, um, at the CIP, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. And it was our former town manager, Kevin Pecos, that said, we need to do roof because it's leaking. And at that time, we said, why would you do this if we're gonna, you know, get a Town Hall next year, three years later? And now, two years from now, we're still dealing with it, and, and the bottom line is, it is a maintenance, and, you know, it, it hasn't been done intentionally, because why put money when you're gonna have to fix the big picture? But because it's just dragged on for year after year after year. We do have people in there, um, you know, sometimes seven days a week working. And, and when it rains, you know, you do have the trash barrels emptied out, and they're on top of desks. And it, at some point, you gotta say enough's enough, and it's a maintenance issue, and I think presented over, you know, the, it, it's a big number, but taken out over a couple of years for maintenance, uh, something that should've been done a while ago.
Yeah, and I think that's the unfortunate thing. If we had probably done it three or four years ago, uh, nobody would even think twice about it. I, I don't want anybody to think that we are enhancing the value of, of the building, and this is another reason why we should consider, uh, renovation of the building. This is strictly to get us through, and again, if you look at it, nothing more than being able to just survive staying in the building for three years. It's, it's a great return on our money, um, as far as I'm concerned. And again, you know, the fact that we're gonna strip the roof all the way down, put some ice and water shielding in the areas that we know are our biggest problems, and really fix any of the penetration things, it, you know, and obviously have a warranty, so we'll know we're good for the next three years with, with the product itself.
Yeah. And the other thing that if, if it comes up, a lot of people, it's easy to say, Jesus, we've got a DPW that has people, why don't they do it? I mean, it's a specialized industry, they're roofers. The DPW is not gonna get up, first, they've got a full schedule, and two, we're not gonna have them up on roofs doing something that they normally don't do.
And you wouldn't have a warranty if you did that either.
No, but, and, and, and we've been, obviously, we've never used, we, we have maintenance crews within the town, as far as like, even on the school side, but a project of this scope and scale, um, to, to Jim's point, you use specialists to do this, because A, they're not gonna get hurt doing it, um, you know, B, they have their own insurances that they are carrying on, on the projects themselves, and C, because they do it all the time, they can do it much faster.
Yeah.
A project like this, um, literally should be done in just over a week, um, you know, maybe a week and a half. So, um, and he'll do it in phases, they'll only, whatever they strip in one day, they'll, they'll put back, um, you know, so they won't, they won't strip the whole roof and try to cover it over, cause it's too big a, a surface to do that, but-
And the building can be occupied while they're-
Building can be occupied through the whole process. It's, it really, be a little annoying, obviously, you'll hear the guns going up on top as far as nailing and, and stuff like that, but I think they'll all be happier with what they know what's happening for it, so, um, you know.
They need to hear nails, then drips.
Exactly.
Yes, yes.
I think the only thing, uh, the only question that came back today was what color the roof should be. It's kind of a funky color now, it's a-
You'll never match it.
No, you're trying. You know, I, I think we'll just go with something that's common, that goes with, you know, a gray or something like that, or a black, doesn't really matter.
So this bid includes the gutters also?
Gutters too. The reason, actually, I found out today, the reason that the low bidder was as low as he was is, is because he gave credit for the, the reclamation of the, the copper gutters, which it doesn't seem like the other two bidders did, and, and there's a lot of copper there. So, uh, while he's gotta do the work to strip it and separate it and go through the whole process, you know, at least he was upfront in doing that, so I, I actually kind of appreciated the fact that that's, you know, what he was doing, cause otherwise I was gonna pull the gutters, we were gonna do it for the town and put it someplace else, so. So I think, no, I think we're in good shape. I think, um, put nice, uh, you know, six-inch commercial gutters back on, um, which really, DPW will do one more check where they have, uh, the, um, the snake and the, uh, jet that they can blow out, the lines, cause those lines all do go down to the drain system in the street. So they'll do one more check to blow them out before we put the gutters on to make sure that they are clear. Obviously, that would be the biggest issue, if you're pushing water into them, then they're not. But they did do that last fall, so we think we're okay, but we'll, we'll have them check it one more time, um, and they'll put the gutters back in. This is gonna be a little bit of destructive stuff. There's, um, some trim that sits underneath those gutters, um, right now, that, that obviously it's rotted, number one, but number two, it's, uh, um, gonna be in a way, in the way where the new gutter goes, so that's all gonna be pulled down. So there'll be some things that aren't the prettiest part of, of, you know, what we're gonna leave, but it's, it's gonna be all functional, and, and if they find any rot or anything like that, we'll have that fixed as well at the time, so.
It's time for the new maintenance program to kick in.
Yeah.
Uh, that was what we were all thinking about.
Yep.
So, it was just, these are steps that have to be taken. I mean, we should be doing this on a regular, and you, and you'll be hearing more of this as we proceed further in this discussion. But I know we're also gonna have a discussion at some point with the school committee and the, in this board, to try and talk about how we, how we approach that issue, so, okay.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Bill, appreciate it.
All right. Next item is, um, Bill's town manager update for us.
I have a, a couple, uh, important things to talk about with the board tonight. First is the hearing dates have been set now for your, for hearings, um, for the alcohol violation hearings. Now was from November twelfth, November nineteenth, and December eighth. So just wanna make sure the board's fully aware, and the public is aware of that as well. And, um, again, I already touched upon the fact that we're out, reaching out to the personal wage board to have them, have start, you know, setting up some meetings with them. And then, uh, two things, uh, that are, that are really important. One was the, there was a road race that was held this past weekend, uh, up at the stadium, and I just, uh, I, I know that there were some concerns expressed to some of you as board members about the noise level, and I reached out to the representative at the stadium today and, uh, and, and asked them about that, and they, and, um, they, they did some further inquiries, and, uh, they didn't indicate that they, they apologized for the, for that early, those, some of those early announcements that were being made. That was not supposed to happen that way. But, uh, the, it started actually, I think it was early, seven-thirty-
Seven-thirty.
Yeah, which was really much, was, was earlier than they, they had planned on. It was supposed to be later in that, later that morning. But they've also, uh, some of that was, was intentionally done earlier than, than was planned for, for other reasons, but, but they have since gone back and reevaluated that, and, and they said if they do hold that event again, uh, next year, it will be done later in the morning, like closer to eleven o'clock, uh, as, as, as a timeframe. So there won't be an issue like that again. So, um, and also that, that the noise was not supposed to be nearly as, as loud as it was. So once it was reported to us, I reported it to the police department, the police department looked into it, they, uh, they, they, they asked it to be toned down, and, and which they did, they do it that morning. So, um, I just want everybody to be aware of that, that they, that the stadium was responsive to that, and they apologized to, for the, for the early start of that, which was something that they did not, uh, originally plan on having.
Okay. One thing that, um, got back to me was when people had called the police station to complain, they were told to call Town Hall. Well, there's nobody in Town Hall, seven-thirty in the Sunday morning, so.
I did talk to the chief directly, I called the chief directly, and the chief was, uh, the chief, uh, alerted the, the details to speak to this, uh, speak to the people running it at that time. So there was, um, yeah, it's unfortunate that, you know, and I'll, that's something, I'll, I'll address that as well. So that shouldn't be the case. Obviously, there's nobody at Town Hall at that time, or there on the Sunday morning.
Yeah, and that, that was very frustrating for the people who were-
For the folks, yeah.
Yeah.
Understandably so, so, thank you. Then the other, the important issue that I wanted to, uh, advise the board is that last week, I was asked, uh, to attend a meeting at the, at the MBTA and with DOT officials relative to a proposed action that is being, um, uh, that the MBTA is, is looking towards doing to acquire the CSX line in Foxborough, which is the train line that goes, that runs parallel to the stadium, in the back of the stadium, to create a, um, that, that the MBTA would acquire that line, which would then allow for, for passenger service to begin, um, in that area. Now, I wanna be clear about the fact that the proposal is, is I understand it, is to create a passenger service that would terminate at, essentially at the stadium, at the, at the existing station that's there. So, uh, the idea being that, uh, that they, there would be additional parking available for, uh, riders who would like to utilize that, that service, and that, that service would then go into Boston from that location, and then return from Boston to that location at the end of the day. My understanding at this point in time is that there will be, I think, I believe it is eight different trips that would go throughout during, during the week. Now, this was, uh, obviously presented to me, it was the first time I, I'd seen it, and so what I've asked is the, is that the, uh, that DOT officials and MBTA officials come out and, um, and make a presentation to this board, so that you are aware of that, and that you can initiate the public process, which would be appropriate for, for this type of thing to be heard. And that the, um, that the meeting would be, uh, I, I've asked that the, I, I finally was able to connect with, uh, David Muller, who was actually the chief transportation[1662.14] to connect with David Muller, who is actually the chief transportation planner for the state, who will come out, and he's indicated he'd like to come out either as early as next, the 21st or the 28th, which was the board's next two weeks. He's not sure if he can, if he's able to make the 21st or the 20th, but he says he would let me know as early as tomorrow, if he can make that date. So, I will keep the board apprised of that possibility. My thought would be that if he comes out, makes a presentation to the board for your information, and then perhaps hold a full-fledged public hearing on it, perhaps in the high school auditorium, so anybody who would like to participate and hear more about what's being proposed. But as I understand the proposal at this point, it is only, it is not supposed to go through the center of Foxborough. It is only supposed to go, it would effectively go through Walpole to the edge of Foxborough, to the Foxborough Station at Gillette Stadium, and then return back to Boston in that direction. That is the proposal, as I understand it at this point. But I think it's important that the board hear the proposal fully from Mr. Muller. Mr. Muller is also, also serves as chairman of the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is responsible for a lot of different issues, and especially to roads and the funding for road projects. So, but he is also the chief transportation person for the state, and he will provide information to you as a board. So, I want you to be aware of that, and that I know that, and that the public is aware of that as well, so that we are able to engage that process as soon as possible.
Has the town of Walpole been informed of this?
That I don't know, but I, I'm not, but I also, well, I don't know if they've been officially notified by the state and that, but I also, I did receive a phone call from them this past week, and so they are aware of it now. So, they do, they are aware that this proposal is in play.
Can you explain what a terminus is to the public? What a terminus would mean?
It would mean that the train would begin and end at that location. So, effectively, and what is proposed as part of this proposal, this proposal that's before us, is that they would use a new type of train that would be utilized, they're called DMUs, the diesel motorized units, they're called, which are, for all intents and purposes, is the, they look like a Bud Car, historically speaking. If anyone ever remember though, there used to be like single motorized train cars that will be utilized for this type of use. Only primarily because I believe it's just a short link between that and the main line, which I believe is the Franklin Line, if I'm not mistaken. So, and that they're looking to create a small depot right in, near the stadium as well, that will house those units overnight. It'll be like a small service area. And I believe that area is the area that's right behind where, for all intents and purposes, was the old Spooky World area behind the stadium, and where now it's used as a maintenance area for the entire stadium at this point.
Yeah, this was brought up a few years ago, and when they explained the terminus, then the trains, because they're diesel, they run all night. And that was a concern, that was brought up a few years ago when this was kind of floated.
I see. And so, that's not my understanding of this proposal though, because I actually asked that question. Would these trains be operating all night long? And the answer was, the answer was no. So, I think it's important to get that clarified and ask that question when Mr. Muller comes out. I think the other, only other questions, there are a number of questions, I'm sure, that will arise out of that discussion. But the proposal right now is not to, is not to have that overnight running of the trains. And it will not be the same locomotives that you typically see that are being utilized, say, in the Sharon Line or the Mansfield Line. It's a different proposal. So, that's all I know at this point. I mean, I will tell you that it's important that you hear it directly from Mr. Muller and ask your question directly of him, as this was obviously, you know, the first time I've seen it, so I'm sure there'll be more questions following that presentation.
Bill, I just wanted to ask, you know, again, it will be important for all of us to make sure all of us are here for that presentation. I just want to confirm that every member's present.
Right.
But also...
We'll verify that with, I think John's, I think, is everyone here present for the next two weeks? Okay, so...
These are Tuesdays, correct?
These are Tuesdays, yes, they're Tuesday nights. So...
Just need to confirm with John, he's out of town.
Just have to confirm with John if his availability is.
And again, just to make sure this room is set up, you know, with many chairs.
Yes, in case we get more people here than we normally get. I think we will probably turn it around and have the chairs back this way to buy more, more space. But again, just for the public's awareness, I would recommend that you hold a full-fledged hearing on this at the auditorium, which would allow for more people to attend. This would strictly be information so folks can watch it on TV just as easy as coming here and expressing their concerns at that time.
Okay. The other thing I want to ask Bill is if you could make a public records request for any minutes related to this topic that have, you know, regarding meetings that have been held at the DOT or MBTA offices, and, you know, any documentation related to financing of this also.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions?
Is it your understanding that this is part and parcel to the South Coast Rail project, or is it just a, just an offshoot?
It's an offshoot of that. I don't know if it has anything to do with the South Coast Rail project.
I know Walpole's not part of the South Coast.
Right.
But there is some development opportunities that does come to fruition, which would open up some funding opportunities for the town, for technical assistance and whatever.
Okay. That was not mentioned at any time during the discussions that I had, or the presentation that I heard. So, I think it's a different task. I think what's happening more and more is that, is that the, I think this is happening actually throughout the state, is that the state is looking to acquire more of these freight lines for passenger service because obviously, you know, passenger service is much more, it's becoming a greater, a greater issue for the state to deal with. And I think alternatively to building new highways and new roads, I mean, this is considered to be the, even while and all maybe difficult for some to latch on to, but this seems to be the alternative route of going in terms of major transportation. So, that's all I have. That's a big one. I understand that, so I just want you all to be aware of that.
I think as long as we have a good public process, it'll be important to have feedback, you know, where there's such a significant impact on the town.
Well, I agree. I think the public process is really a key element of this discussion at this point. I think it's obviously the board's, under the board's direction, that's what that should be, that should be properly placed.
Okay. All right. So, that's the end of the update, Bill?
That's all I have.
Okay. Are we all set?
We're all set. I'm good.
Great. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Make a motion to adjourn the October 14th Board of Selectmen's meeting?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night.